Okay, I will call us to order then at 7 o'clock. Um, I am bringing up approval of agenda, but I have a change myself. The administrative team has informed me by email that I will forward to everybody in a minute that they are withdrawing their complaint with the expectation that the board takes this opportunity to discuss. And hopefully to agree on what we as board members expect from ourselves in terms of both public behavior and our public speech. We have Pietro Lynn scheduled to join us to answer questions. I mean, basically on anything, he's our legal eagle at 8 o'clock. So I am going to make the motion unless somebody else has other changes to announce, to adopt the agenda with that change.
Second.
Thanks Maria. Um, I guess the opportunity is now to have more changes or to have discussion on the change that I'm proposing. That is Agenda Item 10.
I have another change to add.
Okay, Maria?
Um, it's just minor. If we could have a five-minute break after the executive session, just to like get some water, like get some water to drink or use the bathroom or whatever. This is a long meeting and I think we'll need a little break.
If I forget, remind me. So with those two changes, I'm going to call the question. All eyes, please raise your hand or say aye. Okay. Somehow I have again shrunk my screens that I can't see everybody.
Adrian, if you want me to look for hands for you, I'd be happy to.
That would be one. Oh, here it is though. It looks like it's passed, so.
That is correct, yes. Is your screen where you can see everybody now, or do you want me to keep an eye on that for you?
No, I'm gonna just, I forgot you have to move the little dial over to get everybody's little square. Didn't do that in advance. I have everybody now. Thank you. Okay, so we will move on to approval of minutes. I'll call the four six minutes first. Is there a second to approve?
Four, six.
Thanks Liz. Okay, Liz seconded. Are there any changes? Or additions or subtractions from the minutes as such? Okay, seeing none. I'll call the question. All eyes, please raise your hand. I guess that's the best way. Okay, thank you. Are there any abstentions? Okay. Uh, how about the special board meeting of four seven? That was that short little set of minutes. Do I have a second? Thank you Andrea. Okay, um, any discussion, any corrections? Bruce?
I was, I was at the meeting, but I don't, I must have gone through a different way because I heard, I never saw my face up here, up here. I don't know if I went in on a back door.
But you were in the meeting.
I was at the meeting.
Okay, so we'll add you to the present. Okay, if there are no other changes or comments, I'll call the question. All eyes, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the regular board meeting of four seven. I'll, um, motion to approve. Is there a second? Thank you Liz.
Adrian, not a second. Adrian, I have a change for that.
Okay, I was just gonna ask for changes or additions. Go ahead.
You were doing the motion, I figured where we're going fast. I have a question. I got to doing a little research. There was a conversation that we had towards the end of the meeting about appointing somebody to fill in the position for the time being until the town gets together. In the back, there were two questions in there that we're gonna probably deal with later on. But during the minutes, on the minutes, it's somewhere around section 10, I believe. It's listed up that Matt Goutsberg said a statement and then right after that, one from, uh, from Mr. Morton. Um, the actual situation it had, I went to the, uh, the, uh, the video that we watched and stuff in the end. And in the video, it shows that Matt spoke actually after, uh, after Bruce, not before. We could change that. That'd be a, it'd be a better way. It's, it's more truth to what happened.
If it's reflective of what happened, then that's exactly what we should do.
Yeah, I think it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anne, did you get that? Just raise your thumb. Yes, okay. Yes, Len?
I'm sorry. Um, under personnel at that meeting, the first sentence, I think is from an older meeting. I don't have it right in front of me this second because I got more papers than I know what to do with here. The first sentence states that there was a committee reorganization that I was chosen
Oh, and that it happened in the meeting before?
Yeah, that first sentence just needs to be erased, I believe.
Um, did you have another meeting before?
Yeah, we had the reorganization meeting back in March.
Okay, and that was just the April meeting?
That was where, that was where I was chosen as chair.
Yep, no, I get it.
And then we set the meeting for April 7th.
Yep.
So that sentence shouldn't be there, I don't believe. Uh, let me get it.
I'm not sure if you had this before.
I, okay, here it is.
I haven't, Len.
Under person, okay, you got it Anne? Thank you.
Okay.
It just, it just says, Mr. Duzette noted that the committee reorganized, electing him as chair. He requested board action on the following next meeting, four, seven, 2021. That just needs to be eliminated. Sorry.
Okay, all right. Are there any other changes?
Thank you Anne.
Okay, um, seeing no other hands, um, I'll call the question. All eyes, please raise your hand. Okay, thank you very much. And we will work, go into public input. Dave, would you like to introduce the first speaker?
You bet. Can I make a quick announcement, Adrian, before we do public input? I know that she has been with us for a few various committee meetings, but this is the first official meeting where Andrea Hawkins, new, new board member from Clarendon, has joined us for a full board meeting. So Andrea, just on behalf of the district, wanted to, wanted to welcome you.
Thank you Dave.
Thank you. I know.
I recognized your, your picture and it didn't even occur to me. I'm sorry.
She hit, she hit the ground running, so she's already been with us for several things, so. Andrea, uh, we have two public commentators tonight. We've got Todd Fillmore first by video and then we have Jesse Williams by phone. So just those two, Adrian.
Okay, so Todd, you have three minutes.
Uh, thank you Adrian. Uh, thank you folks. I appreciate the opportunity to say a couple of words. Tonight, I, I wanted to talk briefly about the, the importance of open meeting laws and how they apply to the activities of public boards of elected officials. Vermont's open meeting laws are often called the right to know laws. And the secretary, Vermont Secretary of State describes these laws as, quote, "the most important laws we have" "because they allow us direct access to the decisions that affect us," end quote. He goes on to say that abusing the law of executive session is offensive to the purpose of open meetings. Boards should close their meetings rarely and then only for legitimate purposes. The upshot of this is that, you know, as elected officials, all public boards are expected to be as transparent, open, and accountable as possible. And I just want to emphasize that, you know, in the situations where I might, I found myself at odds with this particular board, certain members, I should say, it's always been, for the most part, on those issues. And, and as you go about your deliberations, I think, I can speak for a lot of people in suggesting that the more open that you folks can be, the better it appears. The more palatable and the more, uh, honest and integrity-based, your decisions will, will appear to the public and rightfully so. So as you go about your business, I just ask you to keep those thoughts in mind. And be open, be transparent, and be accountable. Feel free to, to make your statements known to the public, but that's the key. Make sure the public knows how you stand. And then they'll know whether or not they support your actions or not, uh, next election cycle. So with that thought in mind, I'll, I'll give the meeting back to you folks. And again, thank you for allowing me to comment. Take care.
Thank you Todd. Um, Dave?
Next we have Jesse Williams, who I believe is with us by phone as opposed to video.
Jesse, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, you have your three minutes. Okay Jesse, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Okay, Jesse from Clarendon. If you would have asked me five years ago if I would send my kids to another district, I would have said, "No way." Well, now, after five years of the clown show, my opinion has changed drastically. It started when Yount started preaching about his big idea, 2020 Vision. An idea that was already in place long before Yount was around. He just put a name on it and called it his. Part of his speech, he stated, "I don't care how much it costs taxpayers, I'm going to do it anyways." That was my first red flag. Yount has no intentions to look out for the very people who pay this. As the years have passed, yes.
Jesse, we need to keep this respectful. Mr. Yount, please.
This is, this is, okay, Mr. Yount.
By their last name. Thank you.
As, as years have passed and the bad press and the poor decision-making have piled up, we decided to look elsewhere for our oldest daughter. We gave her some options, visited some, visited some schools, and she decided to attend another district. It's a shame that Mr. Yount could care less. He lost another student, a good athlete, a band and chorus member. Our daughter, our daughter is a hard worker, very likable, and has received several awards for academic and personal behavior. I wrote Mr. Yount an email stating that he can do whatever he wants, but in the end, there's always consequences. Diminishing state ratings, terrible athletic program, non-stop bad press, and chasing good families from the district are just a few consequences. I had to laugh when Dave tried to preach about how school ratings of Mill River were not accurate with absolutely no proof to back it up. Jesse thinks we should take his lying word for it. Sorry Dave, the ratings are not committee, a committee you're ahead of, that you can just make stuff up and make yourself look good. Kind of like your nomination and winning of the superintendent of the year.
Excuse me.
Not everyone is going to think the same, and I have the same belief, and we should not want them. This is why it's important for our board, superintendent, and teachers to remain unbiased and keep their personal political beliefs private. Just teach our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I would point people for future public comments that direct complaints that are really quite insulting should be done in writing to the board. I, I found that very upsetting. But we will move on with our agenda. We are going to the MRU student presentation, which is a welcome challenge. Tyler, are you going to introduce these kiddos?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I am. And I thank you for having us tonight. And I gotta say that this is a, a nice bring back to normalness for us. You know, it's, it's really great to have kids presenting and, you know, I will say we have two presentations tonight. Uh, one by one of our, um, one of our staff members and then one by our students helped by, uh, one of our teachers, just to facilitate things, but if you can remember a little while ago, uh, we had one of our board meetings, Jen McMorris, Assistant Principal, talked to you guys about a grant that we had received for our Sugar House project. Now, uh, Tim Parent is our, uh, our lead guy in this project and he is here tonight to talk to you about uh, what's been going on and how that's going forward. So right now, I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, to Tim.
Hi, everybody. I used to work, uh, over at the Holden House back when, um, we had that place. And we tapped trees, oh, for years and made syrup on the stove, made it over an open fire, cut open a barrel and put a steamer pan in it, got better the next year, cut open another barrel and put two steamer pans in it. It's just like sugaring anywhere. It's never quite good enough. You always gotta do more the next year. And, um, it wasn't long before I had a student, um, tell me that we needed a sugar house. And, um, so we sat on that for a while, but, uh, the time came when we got an opportunity to do just that. So I'm gonna present my screen to you and I hope I don't mess it up, but, um, I'll tell you a little bit about our sugar house and, uh, try not to take up too much time. So here it comes. All right, with any luck, we're looking at some of our sugar house stuff. And of course, I don't have it started in the right place. But this is what we used to do. I hope you're looking at a barrel stove. That was a very cold snowy sugaring season. And every time the wind blew, it killed the boil. And that's when Richie Miller, um, said, "We really need a sugar house." So he and I started making some plans. We decided we could get by with something really tiny. And, um, we decided that we'd do a timber frame. So we drew up some plans. And we had the Stafford guys, uh, with my friend, Mark Reichart, come over and harvest some trees, um, take them back to Stafford, mill them up, and then bring them all back to us and stack them up behind the school. My builders include Cheyana, Charmaine, Zach, and Zach. I got so many Zacks. I love Cheyana there in her Halloween costume, probably the only, um, sugar house timber frame builder in a witch costume. Um, I've got Matt laying out a housing, uh, for, um, a mortise. Addison drilling some mortise holes. Um, Nick, Nick is measuring one up. Alex there is working on the model of the sugar house that we always tried to keep two steps ahead of what we're actually doing in real life. Jamie is, uh, uh, our bookkeeper, but also got the tools in her hands a few times. And Devin's trimming up a rafter. Connor's our welder and he's helping us build the evaporator. We set the frame up in the wood shop once we got the pieces made. And it was a ship in a bottle. And everybody's first question was, "How are you gonna get it out?" We got it out by taking it apart. And just this spring, Nick and Sean helped us stand the frames up on the, um, on the sills. And we're gonna build it right out behind the school. That spot right there is by the baseball fields and then snack, snack bar. But you can see it's on skids, so it's gonna get dragged around. We're hoping it'll find a future home out in the garden area somewhere. Um, the evaporator that the kids are working on, uh, is coming along real slow, just like everything else. And, um, yeah, we got a ways to go on that. It's a two-by-four. Our treasurer, Jamie, um, is keeping track of our money, which we haven't spent too much on yet, but we're, we're gonna work on that too. She's keeping our accounts straight, um, on this spreadsheet. My, uh, my guy Nick is helping us by keeping track of the order of operations and the materials needed, the hardware needed, the tools. Uh, so this is where we're going next. Um, that's the model of the sugar house right there. And, um, we gotta finish the arch, make pans, get some sap storage figured out. And you know what? There aren't really any maple trees on Mill River property, so we gotta work on that. We gotta get some sugar woods, some groundwork. Moving day is, uh, hopefully when we have that thing finished and we gotta truck it off to where it lives. So obviously, we got a long ways to go. Thing I love about sugaring is that, uh, every discipline is involved. There's so much math, so much science, so much history. Um, and I look forward to keeping kids involved in it.
Um, I guess I'll go first. I am beyond impressed. Yes, Doug, I agree. We definitely a hand. That is, um, an amazing journey.
Yeah, and it's gonna be a long one still. Um, but, uh, time is on our side. We've got lots of it.
Well, I, I'm, I'm very impressed. Anybody else? I mean, I'm floored.
Tim, this is Len. You, you do a great job all the time. I've known Tim for a long time. Back from the Smokey House days. And the way he works with kids is just amazing, amazing. And I, I appreciate you and, and what you do. Thanks.
Thank you, Len. And, um, you know, things that we're gonna need in the future, obviously, you know, back when we were at Holden House and first came up with this idea, we had sugar in trees. But, uh, um, so we'll be looking for people that might wanna, uh, loan us some trees or some sap later on. We'll see. Hopefully we'll sugar in the spring.
Len, or, uh, do you have a comment?
Hi, Tim. I too remember you from the Smokey House days.
Yeah, you came to us then.
Yeah, I have an access to, uh, some of the storage, the sap storage you may be needing. I'll look and see what I can find for you and I'll get ahold of you.
Okay, it won't need to be very big.
We really have to do. They need to come out with, uh, with something that they can do that's a lot fun.
Can I ask a couple of questions of you, Tim?
Yep.
Sure.
Um, what grades are your students in?
My students are in all the Mill River school grades, um, middle school and high school.
Okay. I was just wondering if it was anything different than like, I don't think Stafford does anything like this, so.
Stafford has the sugar huts of their own. Um, Mark Reichart in his forestry program built a timber frame sugar house a little while ago that I was very jealous of. I really appreciate Stafford's help in this. It wouldn't have been possible otherwise.
Coming from a sugaring family, if you need any help finding trees, let me know.
We will need help finding trees. Thanks Andrea.
Anybody else? Well, again, terribly, terribly impressed.
If I can echo what the board has said, uh, you know, the best thing that, you know, the Tim Sedman's whole presentation is that it builds in every single content area we do. And our kids are immersed in it. And Tim does an amazing job with, with our kids and that project. Every time I walk into the wood shop and I see that frame before it went outside, it's like, you know, really, uh, it made me really pull into what is this and what are our kids doing? It's, it really is awesome. So if you can stop by school and see it, I encourage you to do so. Uh, our second presentation, I apologize if we're going a little bit longer than what we have budgeted for time, but, uh, I have two students here along with, uh, Bosh, who's gonna help facilitate this, but, uh, uh, probably about, maybe about two months ago, I had two students, Mallory Carlson and Annika Heinz, approach and, uh, call. And, uh, in their words, attack us on a project that they're working on with the, uh, YRBS, um, Youth Risk Behavior Survey data. Uh, and their project is getting to Y, so I'm gonna turn it over to those two.
Um, hi, everyone. I'm gonna present my screen very quickly and hopefully I can do it right. But, um, my name is Annika Heinz. I am a junior at Moever and I'm the president of our Interact Club, which is a youth community service organization that works with the Wallingford Rotary.
Uh, hi, I'm Mallory. I'm also a junior at Mill River. And I'm representative in the Interact Club from Annika and I's grade. And today, we just wanted to discuss a new project in the Mill River community called Why You Matter.
So in February of last year, a group of students from the Interact Club and our supervisor, Mrs. Bosch, reviewed data from the 2017 Youth Risk Behavior Survey. And we selected three problem areas for Moever, which were feelings of hopelessness and depression, Moever high school students being physically forced to have sex, and high school students being offered, sold, or given drugs at school.
Out of the prevalent issues in the survey results, the Interact Club chose to focus on feelings of hopelessness and depression, which have probably gotten worse with COVID. Um, statistically, within Mill River, 27% of MRU high school students felt so sad or hopeless almost every day for two weeks or more in a row, that they stopped doing some usual activities in the past year. More so girls than boys being this way, at 36% being female.
We adapted this project from Chelsea High School. Um, it is a multi-year and multi-step project, which focuses on providing students with a sense of community while highlighting how their individualism contributes to that community. So this project is called Why You Matter, and Chelsea High School did it on a much bigger scale. Um, I think they had, yeah, so they had a thousand students. Uh, and their project focused on promoting a positive self-image for students, fostering self-reflection and discovery, capturing the moment, and using public art to create an impact. And this is a really well-done website that covers the project really thoroughly, so if anyone, uh, wants to take another deeper look into it, I'd be happy to send this to you. Um, and here are some examples that are gonna load, there you go, um, from pictures that are at Moever. Um, so starting on the left, this is a girl named Molly. And Molly matters because she's really tall. Um, Lauren matters because she's someone's everything. And Devin matters because she's do anything for the people that she loves.
A couple of these are a little bit difficult to read, so I apologize. But, um, Rachel matters because she can make people laugh. Next is Jacob, and he matters because he likes making art. Julia matters because she's left-handed. And Haven matters because she cares about people. So our plan moving forward with this project is to utilize English classes to photograph as many students as possible using the lesson plan Mrs. Bosch adapted, Mrs. Bosch, sorry, adapted from Chelsea High School.
The primary objectives of the lesson plan are to help students articulate their own unique importance in the world, identify students that may be struggling with issues of self-worth, and refer them to the school counseling office for support, and to assist students in drafting a one-sentence Why You Matter statement.
Our plan is to present the pictures, um, in the year above, potentially on the Interact Facebook page, but more specifically on the lobby television. So when students walk into Mill River, they can see why we matter in the Mill River community and follow their peers.
All right, with all that being said, um, if anyone has any questions or feedback, we'd be happy to answer them.
Adrian, you're muted.
Thank you. I was trying to prevent feedback because I was hearing it before. Thank you. I was just asking to have the screens back so I could see if anyone was raising your hand. Um, I have a comment. Very cool project. What percentage of kids did you have answer for that really pretty shocking number? The 26 or 27% of, of feelings of, of pretty strong sadness.
So like, what percentage of the kids took the survey?
Yeah.
Um, I'm, I'm not entirely sure, but I think every student has to take the survey. Uh, it's something that's given to our TAs and then we all take it and we hand it back.
Okay, Mr. Weedman's nodding his head, so I think that must be it. That's, that's, um, that's a pretty shocking number. Anybody else have a comment? I'm not seeing many faces, so perhaps it's my internet connection. I'm seeing mostly just pictures. So speak up if you have something to say, please.
I'm excited that you're doing the project. This seems like a great thing. I can't wait to see those pictures, so I'm hoping it's gonna expand well beyond just the lobby to see those, um, into the public's eye, 'cause we need to see it too. So I'd say think bigger.
That, that's a great idea. Anybody else, as I said, just speak up.
Um, so this is Liz Philsco. Um, I just want to thank you both for leading on this. It's a really powerful way to establish school climate and to lead on a support initiative. So bravo. And thank you.
Tyler, do you have any follow-up or?
Just really, I don't want to take any attention away from our, the two great students just presented me, but, uh, when they presented this to, uh, Ms. McMorris and myself, uh, I think we gave them, uh, you know, a couple small words of encouragement, just go, go for it. Uh, you have our full support and, uh, whatever you need to do, we'll do for you. So, uh, and I think that, uh, the board has echoed that this evening as well. So, uh, great job. And, uh, we look for great things on this project. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, Coral and Len, I, I know you guys had traded Thank you. Um, Coral and Len, I, I know you guys had traded, um, comments on the student services additional, um, position as being part of personnel, but I forgot that it had been put on as a separate line item. Do you want to hold off on that or can we address that now?
If Coral's okay with it, I'm fine with it. I mean.
Coral, I don't wanna put you on the spot.
Yeah.
Cuz we can do it in a few minutes. Did she step off? Oh, no, Coral's right here. Coral, I'm not hearing.
Yeah, Coral, you appeared while she disappeared.
I'm guessing the whole click the end call instead of mute button.
No, um, can you hear me? Um, Len, I'm gonna ask you to give a thumbs up. You can hear, okay. No, um, the microphone for some reason has been very shaky on this computer and we're not, we haven't been able to get to the bottom of it. So, um, but now that I've logged out and logged back in, it, it hopefully will hold up for this. So, um, as long as you can hear me, I am fine to go now. I'll say it's a tough act to follow those kids, though.
I know. We can even see you, so go ahead.
Okay, that's good. Um, so I was asked this evening to, um, come to the board to speak a little bit about, um, a proposal that has been crafted, um, stemming from a pretty, um, important need that has arisen. So I'm gonna give you a little context for that and, and talk about, um, sort of what's going on in the special ed world. Um, I am gonna try to share my screen and I'm gonna hope that that goes, um, successfully. So bear with me while we, while we do that. Okay, um, Adrian, can you give me thumbs up if you can hear me? Okay, perfect. Um, so this evening I want to talk to you all about, um, a proposal to add a full-time school psychologist slash school counselor hybrid position. I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about that, what that is and why that's happening or why that really needs to happen. Um, the position that I'm proposing to add will be a, um, fully funded special education position. It will be full-time, at least that's what I'm proposing. And I'm proposing a funding source to you, um, that involves IDEA B grant funding. Um, for those that are new to the board, I'm not gonna make your eyeballs bug out of your head, but basically the IDEA B grant stands for the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. It is the federal grant source that funds a huge amount of our special education services and endeavors that we undertake. Um, so just if you hear me say IDEA B, this is what I'm referring to. Um, in terms of funding, I am looking at, um, being able to fund this position entirely from that grant using a combination of, um, flow-through funding that involves, um, preschool funds, school age funds, coordinated early intervening services, or CEIS for short. So there are a combination of funding streams that are available, um, but that are all under that umbrella of, of our special education grant. Um, I wanna just talk to you a little bit about why, uh, why we're having this conversation. Um, and please understand that when I come to you and talk about something like this, this is not a position that is a wish list position. This is a critical, necessary need. Um, this is not something that I, that we're just asking for cuz it's a nice thing to have. It is something that has, that has been identified as being required at this point. So I wanna talk to you about that so you understand how we got here. Um, our district employs one full-time school psychologist. Um, that person has been with us for, for quite a long time and that person is the only person in the entire district, um, who is licensed to conduct psychological evaluations, which is, um, which is part of the special ed evaluation process. Um, what has happened partly because of COVID, um, is that we were stalled in our ability to conduct special ed evaluations for about six months. So what that means is that for six months, we were unable to conduct required evaluations that we now have to catch up on. We have to make those happen. So we have this catch-up scenario that we're trying to make headway on, but in the meantime, we also have all these new evaluations coming our way and we have all these other evaluations that are coming due as part of a child's re-evaluation process. So this year, um, we have faced pretty ugly evaluation numbers. I'll be quite frank with you. Um, our total as of today, so bear in mind, we opened on September 8th. Our total number of evals so far this year is 76. That's an astronomical figure. We usually hover around 40 and the year's not over yet. Now, I don't like to just look at the short term when I'm talking to you about needing to add a position. So what I wanna encourage you to bear in mind is that we're anticipating a two-to-three-year span of this trend continuing. So this is not like, oh, we're gonna give special ed psychologists for next year and call it good. This isn't gonna be a problem that's resolved next year. Now, on top of that, COVID has generated, it has generated learning loss for kids, but it also has generated concerns of parents who have been home, working with their kids, supporting their education more than they're used to, and it's caused parents to have concerns about whether their child could be a child with a disability. When that happens and when that parent comes to us and requests an evaluation, we are very often required to make that happen. There are circumstances where we can decline, but in general, we have an obligation to conduct those evaluations. So if I'm a parent and I'm at home and all of a sudden I'm really, really involved in my child's reading education, I might be concerned that my kid is not progressing at the same level as their peers. I might be concerned for the first time ever that my child could be disabled and that's gonna cause me to contact the school and request testing. Now, what happens with that is you have this incredible domino effect that happens very, very quickly. So in one of my earlier reports, I reported to you that our special ed child count was down drastically, but I also warned you that it was going to come up quickly. So I was, I was correct. I, I wouldn't have reported that to you unless I was 100% confident that it would happen. And the reason our child count is coming back up so drastically is because we are churning out evaluations faster than we can possibly keep up with. Now, again, we have one person doing the bulk of that testing. This is not a feasible workload. This is not a feasible arrangement. And the other thing that I wanna point out is we do like to produce quality work when we're doing this. So I do not want my people churning out evaluations so fast that the quality of that work suffers because when we're meeting with parents, we wanna, we need to by law, but we want to be able to give them a quality product that answers their questions about their child. So to be doing it at this pace is not, is frankly not healthy, but it, it is not sustainable. Um, so that causes me to, to be coming to you this evening and talk about it. The other thing I wanna point out, um, is that I'm pitching this position to you as, as a hybrid. You'll notice that as a school psychologist slash school counselor position, and there is a very deliberate reason for that. Uh, we were without a licensed school counselor for several months this year. So from September until about March, we had an opening for a school counselor that I was not able to fill. The effect of that is that students went without IEP mandated counseling services for that chunk of months and we need to now owe back those services to those students. Those students are entitled to receive those counseling services. But if your one personnel that you have is engaged in all that testing and you don't have someone to do that counseling, you know, you're, you're draining a bank account further and further and further into debt and we can't catch up from that cycle. So I'm pitching this position as a hybrid because ultimately what I want to see happen with that and what we need to see happen with that is we need to see this, this, this potential position be able to have a balance between testing and evaluation and direct counseling to students. Now, the thing with special ed, um, that, that doesn't often apply to general ed are, are legally attached mandates that make this, again, not a wish list position, but a necessity. Um, I wanna make sure that our students are getting the services they're entitled to receive, but I also wanna make sure that these evaluations are being conducted within the scope of, of the law and of the requirements that we have to fulfill, which are just very, very many. Um, the other piece that I wanna point out to you is that we, for the last several years, um, not just this year, but for the last probably three-ish years, we have had a history of contracting out some of our counseling and evaluation services. And the reason we've done that is because we were not able to meet those needs with the one personnel that we had. But we were able to kind of patch in external contracts with providers in the community and pay them on a per diem slash fee-for-service basis and it worked out for a while. Enter the COVID landscape when fee-for-service has gone through the roof. Um, I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with, um, how insurance is bill mental health services, but it's, it's pretty astronomical in terms of pricing. So what I'll say to you is this, um, evaluations, if I were, if I were to have a student that needed one, a simple one and a non-complicated one, we're looking at a price tag of anywhere from $3,500 to $4,000 for a simple eval. Now, if you times that times five kids or six kids, you see where I'm going with this. That's a pretty ugly price tag. Um, so I, I want to look futuristically at reducing to the degree that I, that I am able to do with your blessing. I do wanna look at reducing the amount that we're having to contract out. And the way to do that is to have internal staff and to be equipped to do that work ourselves. Um, so that, that is another benefit I wanna just point out is that there's a major cost savings there. What I also wanna point out, however, is that any parent or guardian has a right, they have a legal right to pursue what's called an independent evaluation. What that means is that if we conduct an evaluation of a student in the district and that parent or guardian should happen to disagree with anything that we found, they do have a right to go have an evaluation conducted elsewhere at our expense. And so that is a cost that we would continue to bear regardless of what happens with this position or not. In general, what I am very, very pleased and proud about is that our evaluations very rarely go to an independent step, very rarely. So that means that we have been able to produce a quality product that we should be proud of and I wanna keep it that way. But I do wanna point out that we could still see random, isolated evaluation costs that we have to pay for on top of, of, um, having internal staff if we go that route. Lastly, I wanna point out, um, this will not be the last time you hear from me about this. I will be back and I will be talking to you again about this. Um, for the last several years, believe it or not, our early education, um, population, which is preschool, so children who are three, four, or five years old and not already enrolled in kindergarten. We've had a very, very mild couple of years in terms of needs involving preschool-aged children. Um, unusually mild. I'm here to say that our time of mild services and pre-K is over, starting next year. We are gonna see a drastic increase, um, in terms of intensity of needs coming into our pre-K programs in the district. Um, we are looking at severe needs. We are looking at extraordinary costs that we have not had to bear in probably five or six years. And when you take on those kinds of needs, you've gotta have someone who is able to get in those classrooms and work with those teachers and those teams to make sure those needs are met for that child. Um, no, having, I, I have spent more than the lion's share of hours in meetings and on the phone preparing for pre-K needs for next year. Um, what I will say is that we are not well-equipped or positioned at this moment to meet those needs unless we've got someone from a psychological slash counseling standpoint that can get in here and devote time to helping us get this job accomplished. Um, so I wanna, I just wanna warn you that part of the reason I'm working to allocate preschool funding for this position is because of those extraordinary needs and costs that are coming in next year. Now, those kids will theoretically be with us. Hopefully, hopefully they'll be with us for a few years. So that's not a cost that I expect to just go away after next year. And again, that's why when I talk to you about positions, I don't just wanna talk about next year. I wanna look at what's gonna cycle down the road three, four, or five years. You want an investment, our taxpayers want an investment. I think that's our responsibility to make sure that we ensure that. The last point I do wanna point out to you, um, and this is just because I don't want you to sit here and like take my word for it, but here's what I wanna tell you. Right now, the recommended ratios nationally around school psychologists to kids is one school psych for every five to 700 kids. We are below that ratio at this point and we have been for several years. Um, I, I, I wanna point that out because what I'm telling you, I wanna tell you very clearly, we're not equipped to move forward if, if this is the staffing that we're, that we're gonna try to maintain. So I do want you to give like serious consideration to adding this position. Funding is available. Last thing I wanna point out just very quickly and then I'm gonna, I'm gonna shut up. Um, is that you are hearing and reading a lot about ESAR funding. You're hearing about all this COVID money being pumped into schools and, you know, all of this, all of this work that has to happen around COVID recovery. I do want you to bear in mind, special education is not accessing that funding. So I want you to bear in mind that that funding is, is being reserved largely for our mainstream general education populations. And the reason for that is special ed has its own funding source and our funding sources are being increased slightly as well. It'll be, it'll be a generous chunk that we'll see in our IDEA B grant. Um, but we are choosing not to access those funds deliberately knowing that we're, we're hoping our board will support the addition of, of the personnel that we really need to have. So I will shut up at this point. I will take questions. I will give more information if you want it. Um, but that's, that's my, my proposal to you tonight, um, to consider.
Coral, could you turn the screen back so that?
I sure can. Yeah, there you go.
Um, that was a pretty powerful presentation. You may have oversold yourself. Will that one person be able to do all of the, the needs that you're outlining? Cuz
It is dire. It, it is dire. Frankly, it is dire. Um, we've done a, I've worked with my team the last probably two months getting this information together. Um, the thing with special ed is there's an ebb and a flow. So you never know, kids move in, kids move out, needs crop up, needs go away. So there's a constant ebb and flow. So for the last two, actually three months at this point, we have met repeatedly to kind of watch the trend and we've run some formulas and we've looked at different options. We do feel that with two people, if we had the allocation of the two full-time positions, we do believe that this is a doable scope of work. Um, so I, I'm relieved to, to have run those formulas and I'm relieved to have information that says we can make that work.
Um, I'm gonna turn over the meeting to other people. Coral, I think you're still presenting according to my screen.
Let me shut that off. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Adrian, do you mind if I make a quick comment just as the, as the screen changes?
Well, you may.
Um, thank you. So just first, a time check. It's 7:50. You are scheduled to go into executive in 10 minutes. Wanted to give you a heads up on that. Second, um, here's the quick and simple ask and the, and the quick explanation. Normally, if we need to create a new position, that occurs during our Normally, if we need to create a new position, that occurs during our budget building process. It occurs through the finance committee. That gets laid out, that gets approved by the board, and ultimately that gets approved by the voters when they approve or disapprove of a budget. Occasionally, you get these unique scenarios where we have to create a brand-new position, which is what this is, which is why we're bringing this to you. You've heard from Coral that the need is there, clearly. You've also heard from Coral that the funding is there because this comes through the, the idea grant funding that we have access to. So ultimately, we would be interested in just the board approving the creation of, of the new position that Coral has outlined for you tonight. Thank you.
Can I ask how you're planning on doing like hiring for this position, if you get it?
So we follow a pretty strict protocol that involves posting. So we post it internally and externally. Candidates will apply. We will go through our standard interview process. We will go through our standard licensure check process because this is a, this position involves clinical licensure, not just education licensure. So we'll run through that process and, and see what happens with it. And, and I would assume that we will have very viable candidates who will apply.
All right. Thank you. Len?
Yeah, just Coral, what, what do you see as a potential difficulty with the two licensures? Is that going to be a problem with the school psychologist?
No. So, so part of the, so part of the great thing about a school psychologist license is they are inherently certified to do counseling. So that's why I'm, I'm pitching this as a hybrid position because I want it to be clear that it's not just a testing position, it's an IEP service delivery position. But any school psychologist will carry that counseling capability with them. So that's what we're looking for.
Okay, and, and just a sec, just a second. So would you be advertising for a school psychologist then?
It'll primarily, yes, but it will include it. What I have is school psychologist slash school counselor because I want to make it known to that person. They will be having a, a caseload of counseling. So, yeah. But in the, in the posting, it will, it will include wording to the effect of school psychologist license required type thing.
Does anybody else have a comment before I ask for a motion? Because I'd like to get this settled before we have to interrupt the meeting. Len, would you like to make a motion? Or would you like me to?
Sure, I can. Because we, well, no, because we were going to do it under personnel and that's fine. That we, what do you want, Coral? Tell me the motion.
Is it that easy, Len? I just say what I want?
Absolutely.
I would like to make a motion to approve the addition of a new position for a school psychologist slash school counselor hybrid.
And that's my motion.
Could we include in that the funding, the funding piece?
We can. You don't usually do that, but funded.
Well, I just, if, if.
Yes.
I don't know. I mean, maybe leave it out and, and somebody could bring it up afterwards. It just, that, that seemed to be.
I think we include it because that way it answers the issue of whether it, it's over-budgeted, you know, whether we're going over the budgeted amount that we have and the fact that it's being paid by ID of B and it doesn't directly impact our budget that the taxpayers approved. I think that's important.
As do I.
I would, I would add that it's being funded through the ID of B grant and does not impact the budget as approved by the taxpayers.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I happily second this.
Okay, I get, sorry, Liz. Andrea seconded. Are there any comments or further questions before we call the vote? Okay, seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, so I see Bruce has his finger up. Matt, I can't see your vote. Okay, well. Okay, thank you. I guess it was unanimous unless somebody speaks up really quickly.
Coral, keep us posted.
Absolutely. I appreciate.
Good luck on the, the, the finding somebody. We have five minutes before we vote to whether or not we are going into executive session, but we do have an eight o'clock time with the school, the attorney that the school uses on a regular basis. So I guess, Dave, the next thing is the three-year equity plan. I don't know if you want to start on that or maybe we just.
Yeah, so my, my recommendation, Jody is leading that presentation for us tonight and the couple of minutes won't be enough to get into that. So she and I have communicated that as soon as the board comes out of executive session, that we'll let her know and she's going to hop back on the meeting for the purpose of that presentation.
Okay, that sounds reasonable. Do you, we want to do a quick, finish up the personnel committee, skip all around? Len?
Yep, I hear you. We can. David had sent out to the personnel committee a couple of board actions. One approval contract for Mary Beth Monahan, one point oh full-time equivalency district interventionist effective next year, twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And I would make that motion.
I'll second it. BJ?
Okay. Any discussion? Again, this was part of, David, you'll have to refresh my memory, someone leaving, right?
Yeah, we have some retirements in the, within the intervention as rank, so this is replacing a, a position for someone who's departing.
Okay, thank you. So any other discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, abstained. Okay, we're good there. Second one real quick. Asher, did you have a question? No, okay, sorry. No, I don't have any problem with the second name. It's the front one that I'm having a difficult time with. Approved contract for.
Voitek, where's Vicky?
Okay. One point oh full-time equivalency, third grade teacher at Wallingford Elementary School effective the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And I would make that motion.
I'll second that one, too.
Thank you. BJ, for all of your help on that one. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, abstained. There we have it. I am done with two minutes to spare.
Sorry, mic is off again. How about we just go real quick into executive session? Maybe we can come out earlier. Dave, could you do the, I guess, we need to vote to go into executive session. Could you give us the, the legal reason, the worrying for, for meeting with our, our attorney?
Yes, so this is the, not one of the scenarios where you need to have a finding of premature public knowledge, but it is appropriate to go into executive session to discuss attorney-client communication.
Okay, could I have a motion to enter executive session? Len, thank you. A second. Thank you, Andrea. Any questions, comments? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, we will exit this meeting and then enter the executive session meeting and then we will come back. But make sure you exit this meeting after that. Okay, we are going to go, is Jody here?
I'm, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but I was wondering when we could squeeze in a small break.
Oh, I'm sorry. You did want to sit, have five minutes.
Is that all right?
Is that okay with everybody? Raise your hand. Okay, just walk away. We'll all come back in a minute. Jody, I think everybody's had their break. If you could share with us the, the three-year equity plan status, that would be lovely.
I would be happy to. So just for context, because I know that we have a few new board members that weren't with us when the Equity Action Plan was, was made in the beginning. In the summer of 2020, leadership team members drafted this three-year Equity Action Plan. And the intention of it was to just be really thoughtful, reflective, and consider scaffolding when we designed the work that we wanted to do in the areas of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And to make sure that the work we were planning in the areas of addressing inequities was connected to our other major district initiatives. So the plan is intended to be transparent and a collective commitment to doing the work. It is listed on our website for anybody who would like to take a look at what the action steps are within it to see. And the action plan is also intended to be reviewed two to three times for the school year and edited as needed based on district needs and our evolving goals. So just for a quick update of what we have done so far this school year, we had nine scaffolded and connected professional development sessions with Dr. Brown. And those were with the leadership team, the board, and our entire staff. We had professional development in the use of our district curricular overlay tool and some beginning work on using that as we design curriculum. We had summer and December offerings in self-paced workshops, workshops on equity and restorative practice for educators to earn relicensing hour credit. So those, a lot of people access those because they could do them on their own time at their own pace. And multiple leadership team sessions on growing our collective skill in restorative practices, including working on auditing our disciplinary processes and the way that we address character education with kiddos together and really starting to make meaning of the ways that we can use restorative practices to further our character education with kiddos. And lastly, we had an anonymous survey to all staff on equity. And that was disseminated to everybody to provide baseline data and feedback to the Equity Committee and the Leadership Team. So we're hoping to give that, that survey again in maybe a year from now so that we can look and see what areas we've made growth in and just kind of track our work over time. So it is, believe it or not, with the snow, it's actually late April. And so late April means that we're starting to plan for next year. So for year two of our action plan, we're currently working to explore possibilities regarding contracting with equity leaders to continue the professional development strands we started in 2020, 2021. Because really, a deep commitment to equity means that, that we have sustained work in air, in our areas. And really, when we're able to bring in recognized equity leaders, that work is just, it's important to have experts really guiding our work. And we're in discussion with the potential of continuing that work with Dr. Brown right now. But, you know, we, we're just in that, those beginning conversational stages. We're hoping to add sessions with an equity leader if we are able to contract with student leaders next year because really they are the crux of our work. And so we want to begin to really meaningfully include them in any way we can throughout this Equity Action Plan. We're planning for another self-paced equity-focused summer workshop, and that will be designed by Brad Wrightout and myself. We are considering possibilities for contracting with an equity leader to do a follow-up on our district equity audit. So in 2018, we had an educational leader come in and spend just a day in our school conducting an equity audit, just having conversations with staff members and kiddos. We reviewed that report with the board, with the entire staff, and with the Equity Committee when we did have it. We've used that to guide some of this action plan. And so we thought it would be meaningful if we were able to conduct another audit of where we are and really, again, be very intentional about looking at qualitative data as we assess our needs. We're going to continue to work on increasing the leadership team and the all-staff use and understanding of restorative practices because we really are committed to doing that work. And we'd like to increase the books and materials that we have in our schools that represent a variety of lenses and peoples. So that is, that's the basic summary. I'm happy to answer any questions about any of that work. Oh, Adrian, can you unmute?
Good, that might make it easier to hear me. What ages are you, are you hoping to bring in to your, to your work next year? You said you were going to try and include some student leaders in the professional development.
Yeah, so we have talked about what ages that could be and we haven't made any decisions yet. So it's likely that would be more at the secondary level or, you know, the upper elementary just because, you know, collective understanding and consciousness grows as we age. And so it makes sense to kind of work our way downwards in that way.
But it would be great to have, have some younger kids. You have time to work with them. I mean, not just, you know, juniors and seniors and off they go.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anybody else? Well, I'll be very interested to hear how the restorative justice pieces are going. I know that topic has come up more than once and thank you for the report.
Thank you. Thank you to the board for supporting this work.
Thank you. I guess we will go back to committee business. We have, Len, were you finished with your, with the personnel piece? I thought you said yes, but I'm just double checking. Okay, thank you. Policy, BJ, next.
Yeah, so actually I think we had a really good productive meeting. We were, we have three, what we're doing is we're keeping three policies in the hopper at all time. Doesn't mean we always get to them. And today, this last meeting was an example of that. So we were looking at F1 student conduct and discipline. And I'm looking at the, right now, and we made a lot of changes and comments and really going through it. Great conversations and I'm expecting that we'll get a draft of that at our next meeting, which will probably be the second Tuesday in May at five thirty. I haven't looked at the calendar, but that's going to be our regular times. Other than that, I don't have anything else to report.
Okay, well, thank you. Does anybody have anything to? Negotiations. We have the 2021 Teacher Agreement, which in some ways is a wonderful thing. In other ways, it means that we're right up against starting the 2022 Teacher Agreement. But we will celebrate this success. Dave, do you have like a highlights? I don't know how much everybody has seen the agreement.
Ooh, highlights, highlights is a tricky one. If I were to, to capture the work in a nutshell, some, some simple dynamics, the two and a half percent salary increase included. The language that was, was addressed is largely focused around employee wellness, employee leave day utilization, and the most important work was around finding clarity in areas where there was some gray area. So as an example, we did a lot of work on like grievances, for example, to make sure that anything that could be interpreted one way or the other, that it could only be interpreted one way and, and got rid of things that were questionable. But overall, I was really pleased to work with both the board team and the association team to refine the language to get the work done. It took a long time. Pandemic in the middle didn't help. But it's exciting to have that work accomplished. So I hope that's a fair overview, Adrian.
When Dave mentioned the wellness, I, I thought it was really good. We, we put in a, a way for people to, to get wellness dollars sort of out of, out of the district. And unfortunately, I, I think nobody was able to utilize it very much this year because of course it didn't go into effect till, I mean, until we ratify the contract. So, and they ratify on the other side. But hopefully we'll, we'll have some spending on, on good things, ski tickets and farmers market and things that make people's lives healthier. So if anybody would like to make a motion, I guess I will, that we ratify the teacher agreement that was presented for the 2021 school year. And Sam is seconding. Okay. Do we have any conversation, questions, comments? I do have to thank Matt and Sam for sort of stepping in at the very last second. And, and not being. and not being completely overwhelmed, which is great. Okay, I guess I will call the question because nobody has any commentary. So all in favor, please raise your hand so that we can count. One. Unanimous support. Dave, you can pass that on, and we will move on to building some plans.
Yep, just me. We haven't had a meeting. We had the one before the last, for the last board meeting we had. The next one due, we have a board meeting coming up on the 5th of May. I've talked with, with Gary a little bit about what, and he said not much is going on. So unless something comes up between now and, and what should be a national holiday, 4th of May, basically, may the fourth be with you is for Star Wars people. If you're a nerd, you know what I'm talking about. We won't be having anything unless something comes up. Probably in June, we will likely have something about preparation that we're doing and what we'll be doing during the summertime so the kids to come back. That'll be early June when we, we do that. So thank you very much. May the fourth be with you. You muted me, Adrian. I didn't hear you.
I said that was good. We'll have to ask you sometime what that meant, but.
You're just gonna watch too much TV is what that meant.
Yes. Maria, community engagement. Thank you, Doug.
All right, thanks, Adrian. So, community engagement met on the 13th, and we had a community conversation this past week. And I just, just for the record, I'm going to do this for a while, just to be clear about the difference between a community engagement meeting and a community conversation. The engagement meeting is a board committee, and we work on how to support the board to engage more effectively with our community so that we can learn from them, so that they can learn from us, so that we can, we can do that more effectively. But it's about supporting what the board does. And the community conversations are sessions that the board takes part in, two or three members of the board and whichever community members want to show up for that and ask questions or talk about a pre-arranged topic. And we're still kind of figuring out what works best for that. But, but so far, it's been really interesting, and it's been a great opportunity for us to get to hear what people are concerned about and what questions people have. And it's also been an opportunity for people to get to talk to board members without it being in a formal meeting that's being recorded and minutes taken and, and maybe uncomfortable for certain people. So it's another way to know about what the board is doing. But that said, we are taking careful notes, and I wanted to hand it over to Sam for a moment, if I can just put you on the spot and tell us a little, just give us maybe basic what got talked about this week and what's going on with getting the document onto the website.
Yeah, this week was, I've been to a couple first as a community member. And sorry, my video feed is slow, so I, please interrupt me if I'm talking over someone. We started with no questions, but of course, a meeting that starts with no questions can still go on, and the conversation did end up having some great, oh, now I'm blanking because I'm really worried about my internet connection. I'm sorry. I just don't have my, it just closed the minutes from it. So Adrian, if you even want to step in to remind me of what we spoke of.
Okay. Gosh, now I am on the spot. We had a very wide-ranging conversation. One of the things that, that really caught my attention was what Maria had sort of touched on as to whether or not we have a topic to have a conversation about. There were a few moments where it was like, so does anybody have anything that they would like to, you know, to, to either ask the board or, or make comments on? And we really had a very sort of watchful group. They didn't come with an issues particularly to talk about. Most of them were there just to see and hear what was going on with the board. So we did fill 45 minutes without too much problem, but, but I think it would have been better if we prepared something to have, have, to bring up just in case. And the next, I will do that.
Maria? I can speak to the, I can speak to the, to the thing that's going on. So Sam has been pulling together a document that it's kind of a frequently asked questions list that will be updated after every community conversation that'll sort of bring up what, what topics got talked about and what information got shared. So if, and that'll be available on the website. So that's another place people can go to look for information. I mean, there's lots of different ways to do that. You can always call your board member, but you can also, this will be available there. And so that'll be an option, and we'll bring it back and talk more about how those can be structured. I'd like to thank, most of the board members have signed up for the rest of the year. We have enough people to cover all of those, all of those spots right now. Doug, I would love for you to join us too, so let me know what months would work for you. I think I sent you the dates, but let me know if you need them again. BJ, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I'm wondering, when you advertise them, it might be helpful to not only say which board members will be there, but which committees those two board members are on.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
That way, you know, when I'm on, chances are I'll get some policy, people who might be more interested in policy might seek out to be the ones that I'm on type of deal.
I think that's a great idea. We'll take note of that. We'll, we'll take that to our next meeting. Another thing that we talked about in our meeting was about board communication with our community and about emails specifically and how, um, this is a long meeting, I'm not sure, I don't, not sure about opening this up, but just sort of if anybody would like to share any sort of best practices they found with communicating directly with community members, because what I think is helpful is to, I mean, Adrian, is this a conversation we should have right now, or is this something that we should bring up later, just considering that we're going late right now?
If it feels like this is going to be a long conversation, then I think we should put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Let's put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and I think it's quite possible that it can come up in our discussion that's, that we're going to have later.
Yep.
So I'm going to not talk about that right now and say that our next meeting is going to be, oh, our meetings are going to be on the second Tuesday of the month, which next month is going to be, if anyone's faster than me, feel free to shout it out.
So we're going after policy?
That would be at 6:30 on the 11th of May.
And, and just a quick comment, because it was my job to check with Vermont School Board Association in terms of finding out anything that they have in general in terms of email. So I'll have that for our next meeting as well.
Oh, thank you, Len. I appreciate that. And then the next community conversation is, those are the third Monday of the month at 6:30, and that will be on Monday, the 17th of May. And I will, I can actually let you know right now who is going to be there, if that is, that would be helpful. Just bear with me for just a moment while I pull that document right up.
Or if you want, you can just send us all the schedule for who signed up for when again.
I have, I mean, you all, you all have that link that's been shared with you, but for May 17th, that would be Len, Bjorn, and Sam. So personnel, policy, and Sam is on many committees.
Okay. Thank you. Perfect. Thank you, Maria. Did anybody have, I don't see any hands or anything, so I guess we'll move on from there. Finance, Liz.
Good evening, everyone. We have the following payroll and pay orders for approval this evening. For payroll, I have regular payroll dated April 9th in the amount of $575,283.84 and regular payroll dated April 16th in the amount of $6,544.44 for a grand total of And for pay orders from the general fund, we have a pay order in the amount of $60,475.57. Also from the general fund, we have a pay order in the amount of $9,073.13. From ASP, we have a pay order in the amount of $507.49. And from our food program, we have a pay order in the amount of $1,310.84 for a grand total of $71,366.27. And I move that we accept these pay orders as presented.
Doug, I think you. Liz, did you, I'm sorry, I missed whether you made a motion at the end.
Yes, I made the motion. I, I said, I move that we accept the payroll and pay orders as presented.
Okay, is there a second? Sam is seconding. Oh, Asha, were you seconding, or did you have a question, Asha?
I was seconding, but Sam, Sam, it's all you.
Okay. Whoever Anne saw first is, is good. Are there, are there any comments or questions? Doug, did you review the?
Yeah, I'm back on again. Yeah, I did. Nothing of any really concern. I did get a concern about a kind of a large outlay of monies going out, and it was a combination of a few other ones afterwards. Ended up being that a student is out of district, and it runs a very expensive situation. The more we can do it within-house, if we can do that, will be better for us. But everything else is fine.
It happens. Okay, then I will call the question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, thank you. Liz, did you have anything else?
I will just add that the finance committee is not meeting this month, but we are next meeting, May 24th at 4:30 PM.
Okay. Okay, we've already done the executive session. We will do the policy B3 complaint, and I will turn the meeting over to Maria at this point.
All right, thank you, Adrian. So we do have another, hang on, I'm just going to bring it up. We do have a formal complaint lodged by Todd Fillmore against our board chair, Adrian Raymond, that Adrian violated the Millover Policy B3 board member call it, conflict of interest, the VSA Code of Ethics and the Vermont Statute 1VSA 312 of Vermont's Open Meeting Laws. Does, would anybody, I believe that everybody has received that letter and has had the opportunity to read it. Is that the case? Yes. Okay. So we have, again, I think we're all pretty familiar with B3 by now. We have a choice right now. We can carry, we can, we can leave it alone, or we can decide to have an informal hearing as we had before. So right now, if anybody would like any more information about any of these things, go ahead, and you're welcome to, I, I hope people have looked into what these statutes are ahead of time, but in the event that you haven't, I can give you a link or I can help explain more. Is there any discussion? Either way, we do need to have a motion either to leave it or to pursue it further into an informal hearing. BJ?
This is one instance. I don't think there's any grounds, and I'm going to make the motion to leave it.
Okay, do we have a second for that? Sam Green, thank you. And do, is there any discussion? No? All right, well, all in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And all against, please raise your hand. I see, Bruce, is your hand up? I'm sorry, it's cut off. Yep, okay.
Can you name them, Maria, excuse me, for a roll call?
Oh, can, okay, then let's go through for a roll call. Sorry, Anne, we'll do that. So I see Liz.
So I, well, hold on a second.
BJ's motion is for us to dismiss this complaint.
Okay, so I was a yes to dismiss.
Okay. Thank you. You're welcome. BJ?
Yes to dismiss.
Okay. Bruce, can you hear? Are you trying to unmute yourself? I'm, I'm asking for your vote.
I keep, I say no.
Okay, thank you.
Thinking I'm unmuted.
That's all right. Andrea?
Sorry, I had to find a cat. I wish to abstain.
Abstain. Okay, thank you. Sam?
I don't think I can.
Yes. Okay. Matt? Thank you. Adrian? Or actually, Adrian?
Yeah, I'm abstaining.
Yeah, you're abstaining. Asha?
Yes.
Okay. Doug?
Love this thing, yes.
Okay, thank you. And Len?
No.
Okay, thank you. So I, one, two, three, four, five, six. All right, and I will abstain as well. So that I get six yes, two no, and three abstaining. So that motion carries. And with that, I hand the meeting back to Adrian.
Okay, thank you. I am opening up the, the, the meeting to a certain extent because there, there was a complaint and, and it was sort of generalized, and it's been withdrawn, but it was withdrawn with the hope that this board would have a conversation on, I guess, what we expect from each other and how we treat each other in, in general in meetings. At one of, at one of the questions of the community engagement committee was from a, a person from Timothée, actually, who just wanted to know what was going on at the board because she had watched one meeting and she was just really surprised by the attitude. You know, the, the, she didn't use acrimony, but she used a word somehow similar to that. I don't remember exactly what she said, if Sam or Bruce remember. But I was really sort of saddened by that because I've been on this board since it was formed, and it, it's been a really effective, you know, not, not always in agreement, you know, I, I wouldn't say that. We've, we've definitely had things that we've disagreed on, but we haven't had back and forth, you know, complaints of, of who's doing what and what, what's the, you know, what is their, their, their ultimate meaning? I, I'm just not getting a good feeling right now, and I'm, I'm not sure if that's something that we can work on at a board meeting, whether we need to schedule a retreat to, to, to sort of go through all this. But somehow we need to, to develop some trust on this board that people are doing the right thing because they are good people and they are trying to do the right thing. And I don't think anything else than that about, about my fellow board members. And I'm, I'm not sure where, where all of, where everyone else is feeling. So I say we, you know, we give, it's nine o'clock, I don't think we're going to survive too much longer, but we could give this 10 minutes. I would hope or a little bit longer, and I'd, I'd sort of like everybody to just, if they feel comfortable saying something, because I, I think that, that we need to work together a lot. There's some serious stuff coming down the pike for our schools. You know, kids are, are needing to get back into school, they're, you know, all of those things. Matt has raised a hand, and so has BJ, but Matt first.
So I'm one of the newer people on the board, and I definitely came in with an open mind, and I still haven't. came in with an open mind, and I still have an open mind that we can all work together. I, I feel we're a great group of people with a very wide range of backgrounds. And regarding my statements that led to the complaint from the administrative team, I never had any intentions of doing any negative effects to this school district. I want people to know that. I was more or less looking to open, to open a discussion. You know, there, there was the, the bylaws, there's the state laws, there was Clarendon's request. And I just wanted us to have a discussion in, in an open meeting where we weren't hiding behind executive session. People could hear where we were coming from. I had, I had no intentions of harming this district, and I want to apologize to all of you for, if it's created any bad feelings towards me, because that was not my intention. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. That was, that was very nice. I appreciate that. Does anyone else have, have something they, they'd like to to share? I mean, I don't, I don't want this to be too touchy feely, but, but this is an opportunity to try and, you know, say, hey, we're, we're really committed to working with each other. I'm saying that. I am committed to working with everybody, and I really hope that people think that I have not spent 20 years of my life working with the school system to do nefarious background stuff, so. Asha? And then Andrea, and then, and then Maria.
Thank you, Adrienne. I support the suggestion of a retreat to get to know one another better, to improve trust, and to find our common ground.
Okay, thank you. Maybe an in-person retreat. Wouldn't that be nifty? Andrea?
So I second, third, fourth, the whole retreat part of it, being like 20 years in state government. A retreat is definitely good. Now, I wouldn't necessarily recommend like a team-building retreat, even just like a barbecue. It's going to be nice out. Everybody needs to be outside. We'll be safe COVID-wise if we're outside. And I also wanted to say that even though I am just a, I am a board member, but a temp board member until things are calmed down with the town, I feel like I have a target on my back, and I started with a target on my back, and I just want the board to know that regardless of what has happened, and I know just like Mr. Yant said, I kind of got thrown in right off the bat, that I still have a commitment regardless of what happens May 18th, and I know it's huge because I have to still go through a bunch of stuff to be a permanent member on the board, but I still have a commitment because I started this whole journey because of the fact that I have the desire to try to make the schools and help the board and help our community and everything else to be better. And I have an open, like Matt, I have an open mind. I started this with an out-of-the-box perspective, and I've spent 20 years in state government with an out-of-box perspective. So I just thank you, even though we have not been completely face-to-face for kind of accepting me and being, well, accepting me, but I can't see you guys. This is like hard, you know? Accepting me, asking me to be on committees and everything, even though I'm, you know, not a complete permanent, I guess. And I just want you to know that I, I value each and every one of you and hope to maybe someday meet you all face-to-face and be able to actually sit and talk with you guys.
Fair enough. Thank you. Maria, and then BJ, and then Asha. Asha, did you leave your end up or you? Okay, Maria?
Okay, thanks, Adrienne. Thanks, Andrea, for, for, for sharing that. I mean, this is a hard time, and I'm all about engagement, and that's not just, I mean, community engagement is important, but I think board engagement is important too, when we just came out of a really hard election cycle. I think the hardest that I've, I mean, the hardest that I've been part of since I was, I mean, that I've experienced since I've moved to Wallenford, and and it left a really, a lot of strong feelings and that we do need to work on. So yes, I'm all about us getting the opportunity to, to get to know each other a little better and to spend some time that's not a board meeting together. I have something else, but I, it's early, you know, like it took, it took my first term to learn about how best I could serve the board. And now I feel like maybe I'm hitting my stride a little more with that, so be patient and is my, is my advice. And that, that change happens really slowly on the board. That's the nature of it, and, but that's what makes the change that we make that much more solid and that much more valuable. And really, I feel like we've gotten distracted lately from the point of why we're here, which is the kids. We're here for the kids and to support them and to make their educational experience as good and as useful as it can be for them. So, and I, and I feel like a lot of our arguing has been about how adults talk to each other, and yes, that's important. We're setting examples for people. We're role models, but it's also important for us to keep our eyes on, on what we're here for. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. And Andrea, you are a full board member for however long.
Thank you.
It's true. BJ?
I honestly don't want to follow Maria. That was awesome. Because I agree, everything. It was a hard meeting. It was a very hard meeting. Beginning of it, holding someone who I highly respect accountable for something that was done outside of a meeting, and then to hear a pretty strong statement that was part of board record. Obviously, I had a strong reaction to it. But I also remember being new, and Matt and I, and Bruce, I know where you guys were coming from, so I do appreciate that in the openness and things like that to that, to that matter. So I actually, I'm just going to end. Matt, Sam, Andrea, Bruce, Asha, welcome to the board. It's not always going to be easy. I do think a couple more pancakes built, made in that oven up the, about the library there might be a good idea. I kind of miss those breakfasts. So.
Okay, Sam, you had your hand up.
Yeah, at the risk of being in, in echo chamber, you know, I, I want to thank everyone for welcoming us as we, I feel like we all hit the ground running. Andrea, don't feel like just because what we got a month on you, I'm, we're still, we're still learning, you know, and, and very much, I, I couldn't, I don't know if it was in the right timing, I couldn't more enthusiastically nod that, yes, you're a member of this, we're all a member of this board until some, until the next election that turns us up, right? Like, there's an intention that we don't all go away at the same time, right? Like, and I think that that's super important. We're all, there's 11 of us, because it's not supposed to just be one thought. So for me, I am just really looking forward to, I, I believe so much in the power of coming together over tasks, like, you better believe if we could make a board sugar house, I'd be all up on that. I'm just saying it, maybe not official proposal, but even if we go there for a day, once it's together, and we all, you know, sit and watch it boil, something like that, I, I really look forward to this very, very hopeful near future where we all are not just a head and shoulders, and that we get to see each other as the full people we are, and we can experience that magic that comes when you actually inhabit the same space as somebody else. There's something to be said for that that I know we all didn't realize how much we yearned for it, I don't think, until this past year got to us, so. Until I can see more than just your head and shoulders, everyone, let's just keep on keeping on, and like Maria said, think about that North Star, which is, we are all here because we want what is best for our community and for all of the students and all of our schools. And I believe wholeheartedly, because I think we'd all have to, that that is everyone on this board's guiding star. I don't know why else you would run and why else you would serve and sit on this meeting that's going as long as it needs to, to get our job done. So thank you all for your support and service.
I'd just like to, yeah. Thank you, Sam. I'd, I'd also like to say that the V SBA does hold two training sessions. I forgot what they call it. First-year journey, School Board U 101. You can register. It's not going to cost you anything. Tuesday, May 11th, 5 to 7, and then Tuesday, May 25th, 5 to 7. Two, two sections. They go over budget, financial oversight, how to look at results, how to look at data, I mean, avail yourself of it if you, if you so choose. It's a great thing. Bruce, do you have a, a comment? Was that a hand?
It's on mic, so.
Okay, yes, it is.
Yeah.
We can hear you.
The, we've had, we've had two or three tough meetings to be welcomed to the board. And not knowing anybody, I mean, by name, by faces, we're getting to know each other. I'm not so much for a retreat as I'm for a get-together. Because like Matt, I think you get to know people like that, but like Matt, I had no intention of making a motion to break the law. I wanted to open a discussion about the thing, and we got somewhat of a discussion out of it. I mean, I've even got a parking ticket. I don't break the law. So, but it's, it's an option. Maybe it's not a viable option. It was an option. So let's talk about things. And I encourage discussion. So, you know, I certainly didn't mean to get, I don't know how many people even heard the thing, but I don't want them attacking the board over that. You know, they probably attack us over more important things than that, but, you know, I think we just need to get to know each other and work together, and once we get to know each other, it's possible. And which, right now, you're just pictures, you're icons of things. That's all.
Thank you, Bruce. Would anyone else like to, to say anything? Because Len?
Hi there. I really appreciate everything that everybody has said, and it, and it points out how great it is when folks come together and work for a common purpose, which I think is what this board does. For, for me, I mean, I, I've been on this board for quite a while. Actually, I was on it back when it was Mill River Board. I, I think, in, in my opinion, and, and I completely agree with the getting together. I, I don't think there's anything better than that, even if it's not a retreat, whether it's a barbecue at Andrea's, as she just offered. And, and I'll be more than willing to help with that, Andrea, because I, I do cook pretty well. But, but I also think a couple of things. I, I think we need to make sure that we're open with each other. And I, I think we also need to listen better. I think, and I'm, I'll speak for myself, that one of the things that gets me into trouble is I want to open my mouth before I finish listening to someone else. So I think we need to do that, and, and understand that differences of opinion don't necessarily mean, are not necessarily a bad thing. It's, it's, I think it's a good thing. And the, the more discussion that we have as a board, because in the end, after all the discussion the other day, or last week, or whatever it was, we came out with a response, and we, we followed the law. We did what we needed to do. I think that's critical, and, and I think it's healthy to have the discussion on both sides to, to get everybody's perspective. And I, and I'm hoping, I, I really am, that where we get to the point where we can focus on the kids, because that's the only reason, that any of you who know me, the only reason I do this is for the kids. That's what I've done all my life. It hasn't changed. It's not going to change. So I, I appreciate each and every one of the board members that are here, and I know that each of you is working and will continue to work to provide the best educational opportunity for our kids, and that's, that's the sieve that you kind of have to sort everything through. Any other stuff? I mean, let's be real, we're going to disagree. It's just, you know, you're talking 11 different people from 11 different backgrounds with 11 different opinions, and it's, it, when you, when you look at the odds, it's pretty surprising when we all agree. You know, it, it's so, but I think we do all have the same goal in mind, and I think as long as we keep that in mind, we'll be okay. It's, we're going to have bumps, and, and these past, this past month or two or year has been, has been rough. It really has. So, at least for me. So we need to keep at it, and again, I thank each and every one of you for your hard work and support.
Thank you, Len. I don't want to cut off this conversation, but it's quarter after nine. We definitely should schedule something. Obviously, we have to wait till the snow stops. Maybe that's June. I'd hope it's April, but.
You can all come down to South Carolina if you'd like. We could have a barbecue.
That would be lovely.
Quick little jaunt.
Yeah, that would be lovely. Probably not going to happen, but it would be lovely. Okay, does anybody have, have anything else? As I said, I don't want to cut anybody off.
I just want to say I'm nominating Matt because he has the store, so he can help provide some of the stuff for the barbecue.
Okay.
Just tell me what you need.
All right. Well, we'll, we'll send out some emails. How's that? We'll, we'll figure something out. We do have to wait a little while before the, before we can go outside, but, but you never know. We might have just like the most perfect spring after, after this week. Are we ready to address transact other legal business? There was something I was going to bring up here, and I don't remember what it was. Well, does anybody have anything that they, they'd like to add? No? Okay. Oh, one of the things I did want to say, Stafford, since I'm the Stafford rep, is working on their, their future plans with, with David Walk, so that there's a whole process and a, a big get-together to, to map out Stafford's future. And it, it's, um, sounds fascinating, and I'll keep you all up to date when they, when they come to a conclusion. Other than that, agenda building?
Oh, I.
Yes, Len?
Agenda, yeah. We're doing agenda building?
Yeah, unless you have other legal business to transact.
No, no.
Yes, we're doing agenda building.
Okay, I just want to put in, we should look at the bylaws.
Oh, good idea. Thank you. Do we do that in policy, or do we do that as a full board right away? It might be easier to do it in a smaller committee.
Do we want to sneak it in after we finish B13?
What do you think? What is, what is the board's?
Yeah, what's the board want?
I, I think, just a suggestion, if, if we all, I don't know if everybody has a copy of the bylaws, but if everybody takes a look at the bylaws and we post them somewhere so that people can add, subtract, do whatever, and then at that point, BJ, maybe we can take a look at it in the policy.
I like that idea. I think, I think it's one of those things that it does warrant an initial look by the entire board
Right.
before it goes to get wordsmithed a little bit at the policy, and then back to the full board.
Dave, could you send out the, the bylaws to everybody? Because they are, you can find them, but they are not easy to find.
I'll share those in a Google Doc format so that folks can add comments on the side, just for anything that they want to, want to have, start to look at in policy, no problem.
Okay, and we'll, we'll put it on, on the agenda somewhere for the next meeting. Or do we want to just agree that we're just going to move it into policy? Why don't we just skip that, that piece? We'll, we'll just move it into policy. Okay, it's getting too late. Anything else for agenda building?
I'd still like to talk about student representation on the board.
Okay.
And maybe, maybe what I'll do, maybe I'll back that up. Let me talk with Tyler about it. I'll take, I'll take that on. Because I think it's important. So I take it off for the, the agenda building, and, and I'll talk with Tyler and see what I can do.
Okay.
If everybody's okay with that.
I think that's fine. I mean, it has to start somewhere. Obviously, it's not going to be this year, but how we start
Right.
On the right foot next year.
Len, I think that's a good approach, and Tyler and I have had some preliminary conversations, so he's ready for, for that type of dialogue with you. Adrienne, it'll be the first meeting of the month, so if you would like the traditional principal and central office reports, we can.
Oh, yeah, I, I wasn't thinking of changing the regular format, just whether.
Okay.
Any additions? Okay, um, I don't believe we have an executive session need at the end of this, do we, Dave?
No.
Well, I will take, if everybody raises their hand, we will adjourn by, by consensus. take, if everybody raises their hand, we will adjourn by, by consensus. Okay, good night, everybody. Thank you very much. This was a great meeting.